Good evening, I'd like to call to order this special town council meeting for Tuesday, December 7th, 2021. Please rise for a moment of silence. Have the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to flag the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein. Laughin.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Morganstein.
Here.
Chortel.
Right here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
And Chairman Servoni.
Here.
The first item on the agenda is discussion and possible action with respect to the council's direction for use of ARPA funds. And our first task is to review CCM guidance. Would anybody like to start the class on CCM guidance?
I'm sorry?
You're in-
I'm here because it's a little crowded, so I just wanted to sit over here. I'm not even- this is not my agenda item.
To not perpetuate this fun silence, I did spend a little time looking at this CCM document. I found it reasonably well-written and informative. And what I thought was most interesting was that while we should be- it indicates we should be concerned about following the guidelines for distributing the funds. It didn't quite say, but came short of saying, "You can almost throw caution to the wind because the likelihood that the Treasury will get to looking at how you spent this money seems rather slim." And while I found that interesting, I'm not encouraged to take chances with this money. I think it's- this is important money. I think it gives us an opportunity to do good work for people who were negatively impacted by COVID-19 and as a result of government restrictions and shutdowns. And I am hoping that we come up with some good ideas and direction for how this money can get distributed to members of the public who were adversely impacted. Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take a look at, on page six, there is a section, the second column, "Replace Loss of Revenue," and it discusses how the town can use funds to replace lost revenue by using a specified formula. And then, I think the way that I'm interpreting this, the money, once we know how much the revenue loss was, it looks like that money is a little bit less strict as to how it can be used. So I'm just wondering, do we know, do we have the amount of lost revenue at this point? I don't know if Mr. Senna knows that, or anyone knows that.
We do not have that number, as of now.
Is that something that's being worked on, or?
Yeah, it's on a very large to-do list that I have.
Okay, all right, perfect. Yeah, so I just want to keep focused on that section because I think, once we know what that amount is, it looks like that's a little-
The plan, the government has chose its own percentage that you can assume as being what your revenue would have been for 2020, or is it 2021, 2020? So, that's all part of the formula, so they have this set thing. But you're right, if you create a lost revenue section of these funds, then it's for use for government services, which would be, at least at this point, a broader term. So you may find some. Now, it is expected that the Treasury will put out its final rule reasonably now. I mean, it was supposed to be the fall, but I did hear within the next month or so that the final rules will come out. So, but certainly anything we do under the interim rules, we're covered by the interim rules, so.
Okay, great. That's it for now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Counselor Chortel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Janice.
I should not have sat here.
I won't use the word "by" for Kate, don't worry. Though, I tend to agree with Chairman Servoni's reading of the document, his take on it. I just want to point out, the FAQ on page 14, this will lead to my question, "Who has authority to appropriate funds? The ARPA and the interim rule does not provide guidance on allocation methodology, as these are more akin to formula grants rather than competitive grants. Towns and cities should follow the normal process for handling supplemental revenue or special funds. There is no legal basis to conclude that allocation of the funds is an executive function." So I would, this seems almost like the Dog Pound account, as I look at this, in terms of the council's authority.
No, this would be the normal appropriation of funds.
Well, you say, "The normal appropriation of funds," though, that we're used to, is the mayor recommends and we approve or deny. I don't think we, we want, the mayor and the council absolutely should be working together on this.
Yes, you have to be-
But I don't think we need, unlike the budget, if I want to build a monorail from Sheehan to Lyman Hall during the budget, if the mayor doesn't recommend it, we're kind of out of luck as a council, basically. This is a little different. We want to build a monorail, we can build a monorail. Now, the administration has to administer it, which they could choose not to do, but I think it's a little different.
I mean, I don't read it that way. I don't read that you could just build the monorail, but I do believe, you have to work together.
Right.
You have to, because, you know, the mayor can't be in a position where a program is developed and, because you could say, "Well, we don't like this. You know, we don't like this use of-
But that's right, that's half the equation.
And you can't-
Us reacting, but that's what I'm trying to get away from. The council, for once, doesn't have to react, that's what tonight's about. The council can say, "We think a million of this off the top should go to broadband. We are the legislative body of the town of Wallingford, and we believe a million dollars off the top, or somewhere in there, should go to broadband. We have the, and I think we can do that. Am I wrong?"
I don't think you can do it in isolation.
We can't do any, but that's not, I know we can't do it in isolation, but I'm saying it's different than us saying that.
And that's why, I mean, even in the FAQs, it talks about, "You follow your normal appropriation process." I do agree with you, it's a bit more than that, because I do believe everybody has to be in agreement as to what is done and how it's done. But to say that you can just do whatever the council wants and the mayor has no role-
Not saying that, that's not what I'm saying. But I'm getting at, the cart and the horse is what I'm getting at. And typically, typically, the mayor is the horse and the council is the cart. And I mean that, I don't mean that in a bad way. I mean, that's how, that's how things work. And when you, you know, and I'm saying, "This is a little different." And I have nothing, when I've, you know, heard the mayor talk about his thoughts for this money, I find myself agreeing with, you know, businesses affected, you know, as long as there's a, it's means-tested and there's a way to show a loss, I don't have a problem. But what I do, what I'm worried about is, though, does all of it go to that? Because I think there's opportunities here. I mean, I mean, even Chairman Servoni, in his comments, made a comment, he said, you know, "To help individuals who were affected by COVID." But, but there's other stuff you can use this for. It's not just to help individuals affected by COVID. There are larger projects that other towns are doing. So that's, I'm just getting at that. And I'm just, I mean, in my mind, ideally, this would work the way the open space purchases work, in executive session, without revealing anything if I'm a specific executive session. The mayor comes to us with a potential property, and we all talk about it, and it's really good dialogue with both parties. And we all usually, you know, come to a consensus. And I think that's an example of how this should work, where it's, you know, but in this case, we can come up with stuff too, is my point.
You know, I do believe it should be a broader discussion. I don't think something should be handed to you and you say yes or no. I do believe-
Right.
-there should be, I mean, I think that is appropriate. I think this kind of anticipates that a broader discussion about what the community needs or may want, and give, you know, within the parameters of what the federal law is. So, I mean, I don't, not sure if I'm entirely on the same page as, but I think I'm kind of close to what you're-
Can I have that in writing? Okay. Well, I just think, you know, in my waning hours up here, I think the council is the legislative body of the town of Wallingford, and sometimes we forget that. Sometimes we run from that, not here.
Right. I mean, I think that, and I do know of other towns, so, you know, because the federal law doesn't talk about how local governments do this, this is why, you know, CCM is saying you would treat it like a normal appropriation. And that seems to be the consensus of municipal attorneys from around the state. We've been talking about it, and so, but, you know, we have, I mean, I know that in some communities, the executive branch is bringing forward ideas to the council, then there's a discussion, and people, I mean, you have to have a consensus. I don't think it makes any sense for there not to be ongoing conversation about what you want to spend the money on-
Agreed.
...and make decisions, whether it's along the way, or, you know, at different points in time as to what things you want to do and what you don't want to do. So, I mean, I think it makes sense for there to be a continuous-
Yes.
-conversation, and whether you, you know, you set up something, some way of doing it, in terms of a, you know, committee or something like that, that's not for me to decide, but I think that's the best way for this to work, is for it to be-
It's not for, who was that, that's for the council to decide? The committee, is that what you're saying? You said it's not for me to decide? That's on our, that's on our agenda tonight.
You know, I would think that that's, you know, I think the mayor had a proposal for how he saw the committee, I mean, I think that's a topic of conversation.
Right.
I thought that was part of the reason for tonight, so.
Yes, it is, okay.
I don't know.
Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I wanted to just ask a couple of questions related to, like, the conversation we're having about, like, means-testing for businesses affected for receiving some of these funds. And I'm gonna, the reason that I ask this is, there's a lot of delineation in the different accounts that the businesses can go out and collect funds from right now. So, how do we know what someone's received? Like, sometimes the information is very publicly available, like the last round of COVID money that went out to some of the businesses in Wallingford, and other towns as well. But my concern is, what gets disclosed, or what somebody applies for, then applies for this, then actually receives funds from Hartford, and then is still requesting money from Wallingford? And I'll give you an example on the other side of it. There are sectors, people in Section 8 housing that apply for back funds on rent from Unite CT. They're already getting funding. Most, many times, if it's not completely funding their, all of their rent, it's funding three-quarters of it, or half of it, or some number. But a lot of people are fully Section 8, and somehow they magically fall behind on the portion that they're due. They apply for this Unite CT money, and they get it. And they get it based off their entire rent. So if it's a thousand-dollar rent, they're getting $750 subsidy for, and they owe $250, and they're behind by X, and they apply with Unite CT, they'll get, depending on how the paperwork is filed, in the gray area, then all this money comes in. So, I'm not suggesting that everybody's going to do this, but I want a level of policing for it, because to me, that takes money away from somebody that's, that needs it more, if somebody's going to try to dovetail it on two sides. I don't know, Mayor, did you want to kind of jump in on that?
Yeah, I think, I think there is, there's going to have to be a lot of thought and careful attention to what, what information we request. Obviously, anyone applying will have to sign as to the truth and accuracy of their statement. Part of this will have to be a determination of, if a person needs money for rent, household, whatever, then, does that rent get paid to them, or does it get paid to the landlord? Because the landlord could be coming in saying, "I haven't gotten rent." Now, that would be one way to prove this, if we pay the landlord rather than the individual. We've accomplished our goal, and we reduce perhaps some of the chances of confusion over who received what, and everyone claiming the other one got more money. So that's, there's a lot of thought that's going to have to go into this, but certainly we will be requesting that anyone who has received assistance from any other source divulge that with documentation, with the amount. And certainly will be an ability to check on all of these things, but it's not going to be simple. And again, we're going to have to decide who receives the money. If you owe a utility bill, if you owe whatever bill, do we pay you, or do we pay, confirm with the, whatever the entity is, that you indeed owe that much, and then it's, then it's paid. So, you can't do that with everything, but that's just an example of one way to try to round the corners, make sure there's not a jagged edge that means that there's more money going out than needs to.
And I understand that the process isn't perfect, and those are probably extreme cases anyway, where somebody's trying to intentionally do something. But, again, my concern is, all right, it's $13 million, and, you know, that sounds like a lot of money, but when you have to spread it out among the number of people that are going to need assistance, it's not a whole lot. We talked a little bit about lost revenue from businesses. Now, how are we going to handle the businesses that maybe can't, I'm trying to think of a good way to, they may have just opened a business and then got impacted, but they're still responsible for backed rent, you know, they don't have an ability to show a long enough term of loss to be able to say, "Well, you know, we lost all of this." Or, if somebody originally had a large dining room, I'll just use a restaurant as an example, maybe they've got a large dining room, and then they consolidated that dining room, and instead of having the bar and restaurant, they decided to get rid of a lot of the dining room and have more of a cozy bar atmosphere. Now, they're applying for a grant based off of a former larger business, they now have a scaled-down business, it's not accurate. They might be receiving funds when that income stream was reduced. I mean, are there, are there models or methods how we would go through some of this?
Well, that's one of the reasons we want to hire a consultant, make ourselves aware of any documentation or approach that will allow us to get to the truth. Can things be hidden? Yes, but that's one reason we definitely will have people signing off as to the truth of matters, and have provisions that we are able to seek recovery of funds if we find out that they were not lawfully requested or received. But, off the top of my head, I'm not going to be able to say exactly what all those things are, but it's going to take some thought. Everyone can be involved, and we'll see the documentation, and then have another chance to look at what, what the actual applications will look like, and what people feel is, can be additions, or omissions, or modifications, or whatever. So, it's going to be a very thorough process, as thorough as we can make it.
And that's what I'm looking for, whether there's, you know, if, I'm more concerned about if there's hard, fast rules, or there's flexibility to look into it. Because, again, if you have, whether it's this body or another group, you can sit down and say, "Listen, the person legitimately applied for business aid because they're no longer bringing in this revenue." But, the argument could be, "These are their legitimate numbers from the year in question." But, but people might say, "But he had a 100-seat restaurant, or he had a coffee place with a drive-through, which they eliminated." That means that revenue wouldn't be present regardless. So, even though they factually identified what their gross income was, it's not reflective of what their business model was turning into. So do we still give them 100% of what they might be eligible for, based on their actual, you know, loss of gross revenue, or what a projection might be based on a smaller-sized restaurant, or a coffee shop without a drive-through? Is there, is there flexibility like that?
I think there is. I mean, we can request, "How many employees did you have, and how many employees during the time period you feel you had the loss?" And certainly, the question can be asked. If you went to a model that it was a drive-through, rather than, well, how does that reflect, what were the results of that in a financial sense? If, if as much money was received in revenue under the different model as previously, then I think it would be difficult for them to say there was a loss. But all of that is going to be a judgment call, and, you know, as careful analysis as we can make it to determine what's real and what isn't. It's meant to cover losses. So, what bills you not able to pay? What invoices are you now sitting on that you have no money to pay? And that would be a factor, as far as how healthy the business is. So, it's, it's trying to tie whatever the current condition is to the impact of COVID. And there's going to be a myriad of interim mitigating steps they can take. They can apply for the funds, the PPP funds. Did they receive them? In what amount? Did they have to pay anything back? All of that's going to be information that we will request, and, again, have them be signing that this is all true and accurate, and they're not omitting or changing anything that would be of substance to the question in hand. What, what should they be receiving and help?
All right, and I appreciate that. And I'll just follow up with one additional thing, too. You know, I appreciate that, you know, we're trying to look at people that are stuck on their rents, whether it's an apartment they're in, or their business rent, or their losses. But, I also think with these funds, we have an opportunity, it's been mentioned before, and I'm, you know, I, I'm quite fine with the idea of, let's make sure we've dotted all our i's and crossed all our t's, so that if we're that one-in-a-million lottery chance that we're the ones that are audited, that we can say, "Listen, we've used all these funds for things that are appropriate." But, I think we should be looking at things that can be community-wide in effect. And what I mean by that is, we've talked about things like, you know, the water treatment plants, we've discussed things like parks, and I think, if they are legitimate uses of these monies through these programs, and they can offset statistical probability of things in the future, like, you know, if we're, if we're going to have another Delta variant or an Omicron variant, where we're going to run into this potential issue, what is the relief of the people going forward as much as it is backward? If we've, if we've set some funds aside to do more open space stuff in the center of town, so that the restaurants can maintain, and people can socially distance outside when we get a flare-up, I think that's looking forward if events continue to occur, and spike, and so forth, and we should be looking at that.
Those are possibilities.
Right. And, but I want us to be, I want us to, I almost want to throw that, I don't want to say at the forefront, because I would want to, it's kind of like I would want to take care of who's hurt-
Right.
-before, but I want us to look at both. Because I feel like, in the future, we may, we may be able to be in a position now, to position some of these monies for certain projects or efforts in town, that will make it so that in the future, there won't be as much need for rent assistance, or sickness, or all this other stuff, because people were outside, people had the ability to get outdoors and do things socially distant, and still be able to have business as usual as they do things in town. And, and I would stress, probably, I would, I should say, I would be foolish to not stress that we are not capable in our town hall from doing a good subset of our business because of the way town hall is set up. It's important, and I, and I agree with the mayor on this, it is important that when people call, that someone's on the other end of the telephone, they answer and address the person. But that person doesn't have to be sitting in this building. If we are set up the right way for remote workers, or a fractional staff here, and then the rest be remote workers, and/or the ability to be able to manage the business of the town, so that we don't have to keep putting people into a building if we get another flare-up. And I think that if we are proactive and tactical about what we use some of this money for, we can set up the operation of the business of the town of Wallingford to be viable for the future in the event that this or some other thing ever happens again. And I think we should be looking at some of these funds for that as well. That's all I have right now, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you. Actually, not sure where we are in our agenda for what, to just, you know, what things to bring up, but I'd like to make this point, because we have an agenda, but I've expressed an interest in this in the past, as you know, and I think the most important thing we need to, we can do is to start from the right place, with the right steps first. And they should revolve around the primacy of the town council in making any decisions about the use of this money, first of all. Before we talk about a committee, before we talk about anything, we need to get together and establish an outline of prospective uses for this money. I think that when I was in business, that, you know, we used to, coming up with plans for business development, whatever it might be, we'd use a process of just brainstorming. Okay? What is a brainstorm? Anything, throw it on the whiteboard, everything. What ideas? So, and that's where we start. What does that mean? Obviously, the easiest ones that come to mind, reimbursing potential losses, personal, business, and otherwise. What else? Well, someone else might say, "I think we should look at investing in certain projects in the town." What else? And throw everything out there. And then you look at all that, then you categorize it. Okay, what is public, potential public use? What is reimbursement? What requires applications? What requires us, only us? You categorize them all, and it can be anything possible. Then you prioritize. Okay, now, what are our priorities going to be? And that will lead us eventually, hopefully, in my mind, to a place where we say, "Okay, we've decided that we would like to, say, use 30% of our available funds for community investment, to be determined according to certain plans, and 30% for reimbursement for business losses, and 20% for personal losses such, you know, you know where I'm going with this." That, and then, and only then, can we then sit back and say, "Okay, now let's talk about process. How is this going to go forward? Do we need a committee, and what would that committee do? Do we need someone to, we need to certainly establish a process of advertising, receiving, reviewing applications, and so forth, for anybody that requires that. We also need to prioritize town projects, and that's just us." And obviously, what I left out in the beginning was, all of this should be done in concert and cooperation with the administration. I'm not saying we do without the administration, but we should be in the beginning and at the forefront of this. Once we establish all that, then, we can then, we have our consultant on hand to analyze and review any ideas or plans that might come up for appropriateness, because that's all they should be doing. They should be telling us, "Nah, that, you can't do that. That one won't work. Or if you want to do that, this is how you have to do it." They shouldn't be deciding any of the whats. That's us. And I also, and don't take this the wrong way, I don't want this run by the EDC. Because if you think about it, why would someone suggest EDC is appropriate for this? Well, upfront, you might say, "Well, who better to determine the losses that are out there?" Frankly, that's a false argument. You want to know what the losses are? Ask. People will tell you. What the Economic Development Commission's expertise is in promoting and helping business development. So if we decide that one of our objectives is going to be investing potentially in some growth opportunities, or incentives to businesses, that involve business development, then by all means, that's when their expertise comes to the table. But they are no more qualified than anybody to identify losses. That's simply a matter of asking people, "What did you lose?" Okay? And, from the town perspective, to go where Counselor Tada asked, the town staff can identify for us where the town may or may not have lost, and then we could talk about that. So all I'm getting at is I, and I mentioned this in my, in previous meetings, I do not wanna see a process start to develop and then we're sort of called in as the approval body. And I don't think we need to do that. So that's where I'm coming from. Before we set up a committee, before we do anything else, we need to get together as a group and that's us and the, and the mayor and decide what are the possible uses that we wanna consider? And everything's on the table potentially, you know? We may want to apportion a certain amount of money for community pool. We might, we may want to apportion a certain amount of money to build a skate park, which has been brought up by somebody and I'd like to see us doing that. We may decide we wanna attribute, allocate some money for that. We may wanna look very strongly at where are we from a perspective, from a perspective of broadband capabilities in town. And then when we talk about other things, we may realize, you know what? If we have to, the Board of Ed also has a trunk of money coming in. So when we start, if we start talking about things like access to educational opportunities through technology, that's probably gotta be steered towards the, the money they're getting. So, well, that's where I'm coming from. And I think until we do that, we are allowing ourselves to be left out of the, of the process. And I don't think that that's appropriate. Thank you.
So a couple of thoughts in response to some of your comments, Counselor Testa. I, I'm not championing EDC as the solution for our committee. But one of the things that the EDC does work on is business retention in town. So they, they're not purely a development, they, they do work on retention. You know, the other thought I had was I, I don't know that we will absolutely know where the greatest need is in terms of the variety of applications we would entertain until the applications actually come in. And then that's, I think that's something to keep in mind before we pigeonhole ourselves. Thank you, those are just my thoughts. Counselor Tata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One other section of the CCM document I just wanted to point out, I had it highlighted and it came up when Counselors Andrew was speaking. On page 19, I thought this was interesting. One of the questions it's answering is would investments in improving outdoor spaces, for example, parks be an eligible use of the funds? And it says there's a multiple, there are multiple ways, goes on and on. But at the bottom of that section, it says assistance to small businesses could include support to enhance outdoor spaces for COVID-19 mitigation, for example, restaurant patios or to improve the built environment of the neighborhood, for example, facade improvements. I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention because I thought that was a, that could be a good way to help businesses and the general community. If we were to have a portion of this go to outdoor spaces, I know a lot of the restaurants, thanks in large part to Counselor Chortel, started doing the outdoor dining and planning and zoning helped with that so that there was more of that during the pandemic. So that might be another good, good thing we wanna look at because I think it would help businesses and also help the downtown, the uptown, if we can maybe do some things with the outdoor spaces, outdoor dining. I know Simpson Court has been great. Everyone seems to be enjoying that. So just something else to look at that, that stood out to me. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. So I think West Hartford is either considering or has decided to use some of the funds for that purpose. Expanding their sidewalks for permanent outdoor dining, although part of their sidewalks are actually quite wide, but I'm not sure where they're gonna put those. Also improving access in terms of accessibility to public parks. So, you know, you have to, when you're, when you're thinking outside of the box, you have to make sure that you're, when you're thinking about it, you need a need or an impact that was caused by the COVID state of emergency and how what you're thinking of addresses that. So when you're talking about doing things to parks and sidewalks and whatnot, you know, you clearly, you know, I have a window facing South Main Street. I also live downtown and I can tell you since COVID, the number of people who use our public sidewalks and go out for a stroll, I see Councilwoman Morgenstein out there all the time. You know, it's, it was amazing and it was kind of like a positive moment during the emergency to see families out on the sidewalk and taking strolls and whatnot. So, you know, you can make that connection and say, improving those types of things is a direct relationship to what happened and this addresses that. So whatever, whatever ideas you're tossing around, you need to be thinking about that. You gotta make that connection. How was, how was it negatively impacted and/or it became a need? Like some towns are doing, they're improving ventilations in their, in their public buildings. A lot of infrastructure because it's, you know, that's money that then you don't have to budget for. Another thing to think about is not to think of doing something where when the money runs out, you have to continue to pay for it. So, you know, if you create a program, you, you know, the money's gonna run out. So you would then have to start funding it. So these are types of things that if you're, if you start to think about different ideas, always keep in your head, what was the need? What was the impact from the emergency and how does this address that? So you need to make that connection.
Counselor Marone.
Oh, Mayor, my apologies. Okay, just one other thing that I think we need to keep in mind, there's a lot of steering, that is encouragement from the Treasury documents to be mindful of the disproportionate effect on socioeconomic factors, especially various groups of individuals, households, businesses, et cetera. And their location and census tracts does play a role, it appears to me, as far as what is found to have a connection and what isn't. So that's one of the things we will be pursuing. We need some advice from a consultant as to whether it's a tract or whether it's a block. There's a lot of vagaries and complications to the use of census material, but we need to have an accurate view of, of what, what is meant by what Treasury states. And then that becomes part of an evaluation that either enables or, or may not enable one project or another to, to, to be one that we can embrace. So what Janice Small indicated was certainly all, all correct and I just encourage you to keep that in mind because there's a lot of repetition about the disproportionate impact on various segments of society that we're not in as good a position as others to deal with the, the negative impacts of COVID.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So that actually dovetails nicely into what I was gonna, wanted to talk about and that is that the, you know, the impacts of COVID are still being felt in some communities. And I guess my biggest concern with this whole project is sort of the transparency and the fairness of it. So I think for the, to Counselor Testa's point, I don't necessarily disagree that, is it not on? It's on? All right, I don't necessarily disagree that, you know, that the council could do some brainstorming, but brainstorming can often go wild. I think it's hard for me to get an idea of what the need is in the community. You know, $13 million sounds like a lot of money, right? But then when you start breaking it down into projects, it's like, you know, it's like a community pool and a half or it's like, it's really not that much money, you know, in total. So I kinda like the idea to get the committee out in the beginning to help us assess what the needs are in the community and then sort of see where we go from there, you know, in terms of, of what other, if we're gonna take on a public project, I think it's, it's gotta be worthwhile. I, I think some of the things too that a committee could look at would be, you know, Attorney Small kinda mentioned like the outdoor dining. There's potentially changes to zoning that we could do that could affect outdoors, outdoor dining or changes in ordinance that we could do that could affect things like that, that could be considered COVID relief, may not necessarily cost anything. So I think that the committee could sort of look at this as, as an entire problem of how do we, you know, help folks recover from the, from the impacts of COVID, whether it be monetary or otherwise, you know, or minor changes that the town could have, whether that's work from home for town employees, whether that's, you know, outdoor dining, so on and so forth. So I think we do kinda need the consultant there at the ground floor and the committee there at the ground floor to sort of guide this process in a way that, that's meaningful. Because, you know, I've been in plenty of meetings where he put everything on the whiteboard and I think it's a great place to start if you don't have something else. But I think that the Treasury document was really helpful and I think that the document from the RFP submitted by the vendor was very helpful and sort of, you know, they talked about a lot of other communities, at least the RFP, starting with like a steering committee to sort of figure out what you wanna spend on what in terms of needs or to just to assess what the community's need is and kinda go from there. So I don't think that this is gonna be a short project, to be frank. I think this is gonna be a multi-year project, you know, maybe even five or six years because the, the, one of the things that the, the Treasury document said is don't plan on spending all your money upfront. You know, so we don't need to earmark $13 million worth of expenses now. You could kind of float it out there, see what the needs are, get through your community needs, you know, and then you still have money left over. Now you start looking at other projects. So I know, I don't think you need any plans on this until 2024. And then I'm not sure what the deadline is to have the money spent, but there's, you know, with, time is on our side, so to speak. I just, it would be nice to start healing some of the community needs ASAP. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Has to be spent by 2026 and has to be committed by 2024. So I did, you know, I, I do take a look periodically at what other towns are doing and I, you know, to your point, one community, I don't remember which one it was, did say, you know, slow down everybody, we, we do have time and we wanna make the right decisions, but it's not a lot of time. So, you know, and especially if you end up deciding to do any type of infrastructure project, well, they, those take a while. So you've gotta have the money spent by the end of 2026 unless they extend it or something.
Counselor Marone, I agree with you. While whiteboard discussions are great, without a facilitator, they're just a wild game. So I, I do think, I'm, I'm looking forward to the culmination of this meeting, which is to, you know, for us to decide who's gonna be on that committee and, and look forward to working with them to determining what we're gonna do with this money. Counselor Chortel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think you'd be an excellent facilitator. Facilitate.
Your optimism is frightening, as is the screen on your desk right now.
What? I, well, I'm just, yeah, so I think that the committee, I know we're not on the committee on the agenda, I feel like there's, what's the committee going to do? Cause I, my, when I think of the committee, I think of what Counselor Marone said, the committee's going to consist of people from the community and they're going to make a recommendation on how the money should be spent. And then is the committee going to morph from that? Once we all agree, yes, this is how we're gonna do it. Is the committee then, do they then administer it or implement it? So if there's applications, the committee reviews it or the committee, I'm just trying to understand the role of the committee and maybe that's later on.
You know, you can, you can set it up how you wish, but, you know, I don't, I don't know, it would seem that it would, should be a combination of administration, council and whoever everybody deems to be appropriate, but, so you can set that up how you deem, how you wanna do it.
I think if you separate the different uses for the money, obviously, at least to my view, there, there needs to be a committee with regard to the outreach to those businesses and individuals, households, et cetera, nonprofits, that would be applying for funds from the private sector. That's the real function. Programs that obviously it does involve health department, what's connected to the pandemic, what, what kind of improvements we can make. It's, 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 it's in a sense, infrastructure, but it's, it's dancing that fine edge because it's not water sewer or broadband. So that's clearly okay, even if it's not related to COVID. So we really don't need a committee for the infrastructure segment, but the governmental spending under the efforts to mitigate the effects of COVID, that would be, I think, more that would follow the normal course of action with mayor, council, developing a project, funding it, et cetera. The committee, and again, I'm, I'm thinking off the top of my head at this point or, or what I've been thinking about prior to this anyway, that, that is going to be a difficult job of dealing with the applications, setting up applications and making them available and setting up a, a schedule for receipt of them, review of them and ultimately making, making recommendations as to what gets spent on any given application, what is rejected. That will require appropriation of funds as well as discussion of the whole thing. So the committee really is dealing with a day-to-day, setting up a day-to-day program to deal with how many applications, we just don't know. And I think some of you have mentioned, until we get a sense of what, of what the size of that is, it's difficult to make a lot of hard decisions about other uses for the funds. But I don't think a committee is needed for the typical governmental response to, are we funding a program and, and going through the usual steps to see that occur.
You know, and on the individual side in terms of, you know, providing relief, you really, you know, you have social service agencies and whatnot who have the expertise. So, you know, I would hope that we would look to draw on that. They know what to, to be looking for in terms of, you know, we, we were talking about Section 8 and whether or not somebody's gotten other monies or something. So people who deal in the social services on a daily basis could be of great assistance to us. So when you start talking about a committee, you know, it may very well be that you have separate individuals or separate small committees working on different aspects of this, you know. Certainly, I mean, I think that, that the mayor's point, you know, if you're talking about doing infrastructure proj, projects, you, you've got a normal process. You don't have to do that. You can decide how much money you're gonna spend and, and I assure you, the Water Division will have projects for you to spend it on. So those are the things to kinda think about as you're, as you're thinking about how you would proceed with that.
I think we're talking about two different committees. And that's what I'm trying to get my head around. We're talking about two different committees because the committee that, that Counselor Marone and Chairman Servoni are talking about is not, and I don't disagree with anything you're saying, but, but the committee they're talking about is a committee that philosophically decides we're gonna spend 20% of the money on broadband and 80% on small business. Like that's what that committee does. And if I'm, I mean, I won't be, but if I was a counselor up here having to appoint somebody, the skillset for that committee is completely different than the skillset for the committee that the mayor is talking about. And I think to an extent, Counselor Testa is talking about, or maybe not. But I mean, reviewing applications, the day, like you said, it's a day, it's almost a day job. It's like a, it's a lights-on job where you're going through that. To me, there's two, those are two different skillsets.
I don't think you're gonna empower a committee to make the decision, the final decision.
Go to make a recommendation, make a recommendation. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. Make a recommendation.
I didn't hear that word in there.
Sorry. Are you a lawyer?
Sometimes.
Just one other comment on this and, and an individual we have working out of the Youth and Social Service Bureau, our case manager is obviously someone we'd want involved with the individual applications at, at that, that. So we, we have a kind of a leftover position from the, the old welfare office, but it's, it's right on point with this. The other thought is that especially with applications come in, no organization should have anyone on that committee who may be making an application. Because clearly nonprofits, small businesses, everyone can make an application. And there'll be a different measuring, I suppose, if it's a, if it's a nonprofit to provide service to people in need, there may be a, a different application for that than, than some of the other categories. But that, that I think we have to be careful about. No one should be sitting on a committee or in judgment for recommendation on this who is actually making a, a request for funding. Beyond that, you know, you, you could, you could set up others to do it, but certainly all of you are more than aware of what, what the town offers, what it could offer, you know, all of the issues with, with regard to governmental spending for a government project.
So are we all clear on the committee? Cause I'm still, so, so we're, okay, yeah, because I still feel like it's two committees. There's two, I, maybe I'm wrong. There's two, we're talking about two different committees here.
I think you're talking about two purposes and I'm not so sure that it has to be two different committees.
It may not. As long as we're clear on the purpose, then the skillset, we just have to keep in mind that, that, you know, the person we, that each person appoints or participate, however you guys do it, just make sure that, like I would sign up for the first one, there is no way I would sign up for the second one. That's what, I guess that's what I'm getting at. guess that's what I'm getting at. The second one is work. I mean, and I'm not saying, I mean, the second one is what the mayor's talking about. And it's like, yeah, you're going to go through applications, you're going to define a process, you're going to work with a consultant, you know, you're going to, it's, that's going to be really, that's a lot of work. And that's, I don't know how you do that. Do you do it every other, every, every night? Do you set up time during the day? I mean, that, you have to work with the town. I mean, that's, that's huge. But if somebody is just going to come in and, and look at the town's needs and say, yeah, we should spend $10 million on that and $3 million on broadband, that's a different skillset, I think. So that's all I'm getting at. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Morgenstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions and comments, but I wanted to point out that we have State Rep. Mashinsky here, and she has forwarded us a lot of information, but I wanted to ask whether there's any things she wanted to come to the table and offer. Is there anything, yeah, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman?
It's fine if that's what she wants to do.
I'm hopeful that the state, obviously, they have in writing guidance, but maybe she has some additional insight that we could hear. Thank you. She's got lots of paper.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm here at your request.
Thank you, Mary.
I sent in an email, and Counselor Moron, I apologize if yours bounced back. I may have an old email for you, but yours came back. But this is a, the paper version of the frequently asked questions about the ARPA funds, some of which you were referring to tonight. So you've already gone over the, the major funding objectives pretty well, so I'll skip over that and just give four basic comments. There are a number of unmet needs because of COVID that came to my attention during the pandemic and were not funded. And I'm mentioning them because this might be another opportunity to take care of these unmet needs. One of them was, uh, small business landlords who never got rent from their tenants. And there was money provided to the tenants, but the application had to be made by the tenant, not by the landlord. And in some cases in Wallingford, when courts were closed, the landlords could never get that money, and they lost a year's worth of income. These are small landlords. They have one or two buildings. And I actually tried to earmark some funds for them in the state budget, and I was not successful, probably because this other mechanism exists to help the tenants. But if you have a case where the tenant has a dispute with the landlord, and they won't sign the paperwork, and they won't make the application, then the landlord is out a whole year's revenue. And we had, I did have some cases like that. So if a small landlord was never reimbursed, that might be a group that needs help. I know in Scow, the Spanish community, they had additional COVID-related demands that they provided services for and were not funded for that. So I would expect they would come forward and seek reimbursement. Gaylord Hospital contacted me. They, they had to care for a significant load of referred patients from other hospitals. They'd be referred to Gaylord. And Gaylord does not have, at least when I talked to them, they did not have a modern medical database. So it was hard for them to deal with this extra load of patients. And if they had a modern database, they would be more able to care for patients. And I'm also aware, and the Coalition for Better Wallingford, they had a higher caseload of students in need of mental health, especially at the middle school level, and they were not able to serve any more students. So those are just four that I'm giving you that were not served previously by any other funding source. So that's the unmet needs. The second point is that, per this document that I just gave you, the frequently asked questions from the Treasury, US Treasury, the town can make a physical improvement to a park or the pool, but, but two things. The council has to be mindful of the limits to the funds. If you do one big project of infrastructure, you may not have enough funds for all these residents and businesses, small businesses that need your help as well. So, you know, just be mindful of that, that one infrastructure project can suck up all the money, basically. They can qualify, looking at the rules here, the interim rules, if you're serving a population in need, and there is the census tract way of recognizing the population, or there's also services to populations, households, or geographic areas disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. So you could, even outside of the census tract, you could, you could choose to do a park improvement to build a stronger neighborhood in the community and to give people an outdoor way to have a better health outcome. And then Counselor Tatta also mentioned the facade improvements and the outdoor patios for downtown businesses, which, which is another open space that could be funded to, to make the whole community more healthy. Okay, then the third thing is, you know, reading this document, there's a lot of leeway in here for types of projects. You have almost an unlimited variety of projects you can fund. The main things not to do are, don't try to fund anything pre-COVID, and they have a date in here. You should not go before the date. And, and then the other obvious one, which I know you all know because you follow the news, is avoid what West Haven did. They, West Haven set up an, an illegal program for services. They used one of their state representatives to do the program. He didn't do the program. Money disappeared. So West Haven and the former state representative are both in legal trouble right now. But obviously, you would not do that. I'm just mentioning it because somebody did it. One town did it. So those are the things to avoid. And then a lot of the towns are using a consultant, which makes a lot of sense to me, because the consultant is familiar with this luminous pile of interim regulations, and, and they'll come in already knowing what you can and can't do. So it makes perfect sense to do that. Use, use a consultant. So I'll just let you read the packet on your own, and also there's the electronic one if you don't, if you're not a paper person. And thank you for all the help you're giving folks as a result of the COVID pandemic. A lot of need out there, and you'll hear about it probably when you set up your committee. So good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Need anything else, you can.
Mary, I want to thank you. I know that early in the pandemic, you were literally delivering meals to people, so.
Yep, at one point I did do that.
Yeah. I, I want to circle back around to the broadband meeting and such. I know there was a recent article in the paper where Cheshire closed their town hall again, and I'm living the life of reminding people that we're on an upswing again. And I don't think that this body or the administration should ignore the fact that we do not have hybrid live and remote system that allows people from home to be participating in a meeting, even if we are live streaming meetings. And so the point of people within this building being able to work from home, but also people participating in this meeting, planning and zoning, all of these things is, is a must that I just honestly can't even imagine that there should need to be a discussion. We are not looking at the only pandemic. This, this is not a one-off thing, honestly. So I just have to stress that. The utmost importance of the idea of moving toward the future of how government has to work is part of spending of our money.
Much of this is, is aimed at negative impacts and, and addressing them and serving the hardest-hit communities. But another whole portion of this bill, law, is to invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And you, you as the council could decide that if certain low-income neighborhoods need more broadband access so that they rise up in the economy, you could decide to service that area. And that's, you know, that's one of the permitted uses of the funds. You could decide to broadband the whole small businesses downtown, for example.
Yeah. So these are very real things, or students that, you know, if, if you don't have internet in your home, you can't go to school. Yeah.
Yeah. So you're allowed, you're allowed to do that. And, and of course, you could also do the water and sewer, wastewater, stormwater, especially in, in a broadband, especially in underserved areas, that's encouraged. So a lot of choices here.
Thank you.
Just don't do any West Haven stuff. You'll be fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. And I agree a lot with what Counselor Moron was saying, too. I'm sure there are other things we can look at as far as, like, the outdoor dining situations that were previously more restrictive have turned out to be okay. Like, you know, the world, you know, the town didn't catch on fire or anything, lightening them up. So it's something to look at. But as far as this committee and these funds, while I can be convinced of a need or a use for a government project, I don't, I get that it's allowed, but I don't know that it's, it's best, especially in a town like ours, when we have a fund and a rating that we can leverage to, to do these other projects, that other towns don't. The ones that are blowing through their funds don't have the, the same situation that we do. So I would be in favor in getting into what Counselor Chortel was talking about if, if even if we decided on percentages before the creation of this committee, that we reserved, I don't know what percent, for our projects, if we were going to do that. The way that I see it, or I have been thinking about these committees, is similar to the way that the POCD ended up rolling out and being implemented. A committee for some sort of study approval application process with a review, an approval at the council level, and then implementation. It could be through another committee, or that could just be an administrative function, either not an extension of the, of the consultant, but something similar, or through the social services department. I know it would be larger, it would probably require hiring an additional person or two, but like we talked about, that's kind of a minutia, day-to-day job thing. But, but I think what's important is that, that we, you know, there's a lot of people here, and I want to, I want to hear from the people here, too, that, that we're, that we are considering that this money was really for the kind of make up for the losses. And when you look at what happened during COVID, sure, people couldn't pay rent, but who stepped up in the meantime? It was the nonprofits that stepped up. They were there to cover people's expenses. They were there to help people. So I think it's important that we involve, and we have a lot of strong nonprofits in our community, that we involve them in this whole process, not just possibly, I guess, for reallocation of, of funding themselves or some sort of award, but that they, they already have a pulse on the community. They were already doing it. They know who needed the money. They know what type of people needed the money. So I think it's important that we involve, involve them. So, and, and I think we've all spoke, with the exception of Counselor Fishbein, so, I know, and I don't know where we are on the agenda at this point. I feel like we're all over the place. And, and I know other people want to speak, too. I don't have the authority to throw out the, I'm just the vice chairman who's here, to, to change the who speaks next thing. But I, I want to hear what, what the people that have showed up here have to say. And, and that, those are just my thoughts on the committee structure and implementation. Thanks.
So I'm going to let a few counselors speak, and then we'll open up to the public. And then we need to figure out where we are in terms of the agenda and what we want to accomplish for the evening with what's listed up here. So next is Counselor Testa.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. I, I appreciate the question, the way Counselor Chortel crafted the concept of two committees. My point is a simple one. The first committee you're talking about exists, as to paraphrase Pogo, it is us. That's what I'm stressing. We should not be passing the responsibility to anyone else to make the initial decisions on what the priorities are going to be. That's our job, and we should do that. And then by all means, we can consider a committee to do all the other things you think we should do, everyone thinks we should do. But we should be making those decisions. So we are the first committee. That's, that's it. Thanks.
Counselors Andrew.
Yeah, I, I'll be brief, too. The, the comments earlier were made about how we, we only have to commit the funds through 2024, and then we have up till 2026 to spend them unless it gets extended. I, I'm, I'm all for setting a segmentation of this money for the future or longer term, but I don't think we should be waiting. I, I don't want to suggest we need to rush, but two years from now, there's going to be some business owners that are going to be out of business because they, they're, they're, they're at a disadvantage right now, and they, they need help. And there are going to be somebody, there's potentially nonprofits where if the donors don't come back, they're going to fall down, too. So inside of two years, we should do something now and then kind of judge out what we want to spend along the way, and then know that we've got all the way out to 2026 to do it. We should take some action now, in the short term, shore people up, and then kind of move things along. I don't want to underplay or overplay somebody's status, but there are some people that need more help right now, and we should be looking near-term as much as we are longer term. I just wanted to kind of throw that out there.
I, I didn't mean to suggest that you had to wait till 2024. You can start spending it, you can start spending it now. It's, it has to be committed by that date.
Right.
So yes, you can absolutely spend it sooner than that.
Yeah, and I didn't want to make it seem like you were suggesting we should wait, but I mean, it might put it into some people's minds, all right, good, so we can take some more time, and we could do, there is some sense of urgency for some.
It's not a lot of, and it's not a lot of time.
Yeah. I mean, there's definitely some sense of urgency for quite a, quite a few people and, and, like I said, nonprofit organizations. So should look at the near-term on some and then the long-term from there. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, all too often I do find myself agreeing with Counselor Testa, and this is another time. As far as the committee approach, initially, we should be setting that, those guardrails, our policy, our ultimate goals. You know, from there, if we choose to defer to others, always open to the discussion. Good-natured debate is always good in these, in these areas. That's a discussion for another day. You know, if a committee is going to be appointed, I would suggest that that not be done until the next term, so that the individuals that are the other bookend, that will be sitting up here, the new counselors, are part of that good-natured debate and a part of making those appointments. As to specific projects, which I did hear a portion of those discussions, I am fully in support of having broadband in the downtown area, especially in the area that's covered by WCI, our downtown. Certainly individuals that went through the pandemic, there was, I, I was contacted by plenty of individuals who usually use the library for their internet access. Couldn't do that. The library was closed. What do you do? People that wanted to. People that wanted to, um, apply for their unemployment benefits, because we allowed self-employed individuals to apply for unemployment benefits, but the state won't let you do it other than electronically. Those people were, were harmed. So, you know, at least having broadband in the downtown area, which, you know, to say to a business, "Come to our downtown." You not only get this great electric reduced rate in that zone, but you're not going to have to sign up, if, if you don't want to, have your own internet service. We'd have internet service in this building, which I know has been an issue with the council having to use our own hotspots and stuff like that. I'm not trying to be greedy, just trying to be outside of the box. The, the question becomes who pays for the ongoing service, and I guess that'll be a discussion that we have in the future, but there would have to be some sort of infrastructure for broadband in the downtown. The other thing is that we can look at, just, you know, I don't want to throw out a bunch of stuff here, but that WCI facade program, it's an enhancement to our downtown. You know, it's a, it's infrastructure, it's not an ongoing situation. It's been a, one of my babies since I've been up here. I think that we should be seriously looking at improving our downtown or partnering, private partner, private-public partnership to, to do some of that stuff with some of this money. As to taking a portion of it and putting it in, like, the town council budget for our own grant program, you know, it's something that I did think about years ago. I don't know where I am on that. I know that's part of what's being discussed here. You know, there is a procedure in place. I look forward to the debate on that. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Out to members of the public. Ms. Harlow. Name an address for the record, please.
Maria Harlow, Six Holly Lane. Well, it's very encouraging to hear this discussion tonight. You have a big, big job in your hands. I just want to, for all of us to keep in mind that we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to do something that is really meaningful in the community, to help people to move ahead, to get over the damage caused by the pandemic, and we can move ahead. You have an enormous amount of resources and knowledge of expertise from the nonprofits in town. Just, just, I love what Janice suggested. They are a great resource to work with the individuals, to work with grants to households, to learn, to know about their needs. They know what their needs are, and they know how to address those needs. So I think that that is a, a body that has to be very much part of this process. I understand that it's difficult, because if a nonprofit wants to participate and submit a grant application, they will definitely make themselves, they will be in conflict of interest. But somehow, that's a, a, a enormous resource that we have here in town to be able to help. There are other, all the minutia, I'm talking about the grant-making, grant applications, again, that's something else that you can come back to the nonprofits. We have a lot of experience working in that area, and that's something else that we can help. I just commend you for, for having this conversation. It's, it's robust, it's an enormous responsibility. And let's keep in mind that this is COVID response and COVID recovery. We can do a lot with that money to be able to help people to get off this situation and move up. So thank you for your work. Please reach out to your local nonprofits, get our opinion and our feedback, because it will be very helpful in this process. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Glidden.
Good evening. Mike Glidden, 29 Palmroy Avenue. I'm the president of Wallingford Center, Inc., and thanks for the shout-out, Craig, for our facade program. That's one of the options that we have out there. We have this current program, we give to some of our businesses in the center. Just a few comments I wanted to make, not as the president of WCI, but as a taxpayer. Your, this, this whole process with the funds that's coming, you essentially have just stepped into the role, if, if we were a community that had a population of 50,000 or greater, it's an entitlement community, meaning your community block grant program, you get a lump of fun, of some, of funds that come to the town. Individuals or organizations come to the town, present a need that meets the national objective. So your national objective is the guidance from the U.S. Treasury Office. So what I would say, if you're going to form a committee, I understand Counselor Testa's concern that the council should be the ultimate authority. The function of that committee could be, say, "Listen, we can't measure the need. We can't say, is it just going to be the businesses of the downtown? Is it going to be individuals looking for rental assistance, for mortgage assistance? Is it going to be, you know, the infrastructure improvements?" Craig brought a great idea up on the, the broadband downtown as, as a potential activity or application. That's the function, your committee should be doing that. And I think because it's going to be such a monumentous tax, a, a task that's going to face this community, you need the, you need the committee to make some of those decisions. If you go to the CCM guidance document, you know, you see that it says, "If you're going to form a committee, make it a wide group of individuals." So individuals, I, I disagree with Chris Chortel's comments about having two different committees. It should just be a plethora of, you have people that have business or economic developments, you have the social service background, or the health, someone representing the health department, or something of a medicine, health background, down to, you know, the United Way or someone like that, or SCOW that's coming to the table, and it's just a bunch of different perspectives. So you have this, you have this group. It could be nine people, just say, just similar to the council. All these different disciplines are represented at the table. You send a notice out, similar to, like I said, with, like, the entitlement communities, where they say, "Here's an announcement of funds." You demonstrate, they apply to you, and that's maybe what the consultant could have the role. They apply to the committee, the committee reviews it, and then the committee basically issues, in a, in a, a entitlement community, they'll have a hearing, the applicants go forward, they present it, and then they issue a report. You've already have a few examples out there. If you're looking at, like what Craig said earlier about the grants program, I said it at the last town council meeting, I would strongly urge you to look at the town East Windsor. They did a grant program. They have an application. Some of the questions that you have to provide documents, such as, "Did you receive state or federal funding?", is part of that process. And it says with a blurb, with a warning on there, those applicants, the town reserves the right, one, to say, "No, you don't qualify," or, two, the town has the right to say, "I would like additional information." And that's, we don't need a consultant. That's already, a consultant was hired, retained in East Windsor and developed that application process. So, and it, it met the needs. That was, and they were only giving $10,000 grants. And I can't stress enough, I mean, you know, Maria said the other thing about those of us who have grant experience as a certified grant administrator, at least with a community block grant program, it, it really, you know, it's going to be about the individuals who know how to document what, what you need to see, and that puts the importance, I would say, on this committee. Like I said, that's where you should be handling, holding it. And just the shameless plug, as the president of WCI, if, if a, when and if a committee's formed, we would like a seat at the table. Because as we, as I said at the last meeting, we have heard some of the need, whether it's landlord, business owners, et cetera, that have come before us at our merchant meetings and saying, "What's out there?" And they're, they're hungrily waiting for more information after we did a tease meeting about three months ago, where Tim Ryan said, "We're getting $13 million. What do we do with it?" And just the final comment is this, is, you know, Attorney Small is right, you have till 2024 to commit the funds, you have till 2026 to spend the funds. I would urge the town, the council, or whomever, spend everything, even if it means that we get to the point where we, we've, we've measured need and we still have, let's say, $2 million left. Does the Board of Education have any uses that maybe, that we can spend that extra money? Spend every penny, because every penny we don't spend will be allotted to another community. So I think we have enough need here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Allenson.
Autumn Allenson, 126 High Hill Road. I'm in agreement that broadband downtown would be great. I, the only thing I caution with regarding, wow, it's really loud, regarding earmarking or setting aside funds for public use versus, you know, small businesses or individuals, we don't know how much, how much, how many implications there will be in the coming years for nonprofits. As we see people exiting cities to come to suburbs, and we see higher needs happening this year, I have a feeling that our nonprofits will actually have greater needs in the coming years. So, while we do think, while we may want to do projects downtown, and, and broadband does sound great, but it's, it's kind of a strategic plan item, so I don't know that it's, it qualifies, because we'd have to continue spending on it after the grant. I, I just do want to caution that people are not only impacted now, they're, they're going to be impacted in the future, which is probably why we have until 2024 to earmark. But that's all of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Because I don't see any other takers, I'm going to come back to the council and take another look at the agenda. We, other than West Haven, we really haven't talked about what other municipalities in Connecticut are doing. Do we want to spend some time talking about that? I'm not seeing a rush to the forefront for that. We've talked about these other items, about coming up with proposed guidelines and the creation of a committee or committees. You know, I, my thought is, and I'm not speaking for everyone, but I, I think coming up with the guidelines is, is something that I'd, I'd like to do with input from select members of the community, so a joint committee of the council. And, and certain people, you know, we've heard suggestions here, so maybe a representative from EDC, a representative from WCI, a representative from the Quinnipiac Chamber, a representative from the Health Department, a representative from Youth and Social Services, and perhaps somebody in finance, whether it's the town's finance department, or it's somebody who's a financial professional, you know, a bank officer, somebody who has a, a perception of what the business community has spoken to them about in terms of needs. And I, I'd like to see this joint committee of the council and these other members of the community formed, and then have, have a discussion facilitated by the consultant. I think that that would be a great focused and productive use of time. I find it hard to decide how we're going to cut up this money without having input from people in the community who are aware of what the community's needs are as a result of COVID. And so, that's, you know, having heard all the discussion in the room, that's my thought about going forward. Second. Are we making a motion, or are you just? Well, I, I, I've so rarely made motions over the past six years, but I, I guess, and, and I didn't mean that to be exclusive of who we should appoint to that joint committee, but I'm. Sounded really good, the way you were describing it. Okay, well, thank you.
May we, may I suggest adding public safety?
Yes. It's actually eight right now. Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I don't disagree with, with who we're involving, I just, I'm not sure we need to, I'm afraid if we form a committee with select groups, that then we might be leaving out other groups. So I, I'm kind of going back to Counselor Testa's idea that if we just leave this with the council, but then every time we have these meetings, I mean, we can certainly contact those that we know would want to be involved, you know, certainly we've heard from, from some tonight, but just maybe allow, allow more comment from them, rather than, I'm, I'm just afraid if we create a committee and only invite certain groups or certain members, and we think we're getting everybody, and then somebody could say, "Well, I, I would have loved to be on that, but I didn't know, I wasn't aware." So maybe we just leave it with the council, but then every time we have these meetings, or when we have this meeting with a consultant, we just make sure we inform as many people as, as we can, so that they can come and speak and let us, just inform us of their needs. Thank you.
I, I don't disagree. I, I think more information and more minds are going to be helpful when it comes to this process. Attorney Small, did you want to say something?
I just want to point out that you really can't form a committee now, because it technically expires for the next term. Your committees only last the term, so technically, you'd have to do it again in January.
So you're, you're talking about the appointed individuals, right?
Now, the creation of a committee. The committee itself, if it's a committee of the count, that the council creates for the, for the council, it only lasts your term. So, I mean, you could do it now, but you'd have to redo it again in January, that's all. Technicalities.
All right. Well, some thoughts to be held, but, you know, my further thought is to have these committee meetings not be exclusive, and certainly inclusive, of public comment. Counselor Chortel. I mean, I'd be happy to lead this committee tonight. If you want to form the committee tonight, I will lead it. I will do what you need. You know, to Counselor Todd's point and Counselor Testa's point, I, I think you have, I really liked your committee idea, but I, I did like what Christina said. I feel like you could do it one of two ways. You could form the committee in January at the first, you know, first meeting, the first regular meeting. The other way you could do it, though, to, to their point, I mean, I think you just have to go all in, and you almost treat it like the budget, in the sense that you start in January, you schedule a series of almost workshops with nonprofits, with, you know, you just kind of work, work through, really dive into it. And that, and that, to Counselor Testa's point, that in essence, you're, that becomes the committee, that's how the council does it. And you just work through, get all the feedback, get all the info. That, that's just my thought. That could be a different way to do it, but, but I kind of like your committee idea a little better. So, anyway, I'm just throwing that out there. Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Laffin.
Yeah, I'm more in favor of the council being the jury, and then whoever shows up between the nonprofits and the department heads at these series of meetings, pleading the case versus giving a vote to designated nonprofits and departments. Because that, that's ultimately what it would become, right, if we formed a committee? They become voting members within that function?
Presumably.
So, I mean, I think everybody up here would probably want to be involved. I don't think anybody here would, would give away their spot. So that's already nine people, nine votes. So I think it's one, the nine of us, the, the next nine. So I'm more in favor of involving all of those committees, departments and nonprofits, but having the vote come from the, the council as a, as a jury and the percentages of allocations of funds.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, especially with this, I think of, you know, it takes a village. Certainly at a meeting that, you know, let's say the police chief is the designee of public safety. We have two different kinds of committees. We have a committee where the police chief has a seat at the table, and it's his responsibility as a committee member to be part of that meeting, or to send somebody in instead. Or it's a, "Oh, that's a meeting of the council, and I don't, you know, I'm not required to go to that, and don't know necessarily if something's going to come up in the exchange of good ideals, you know, among the various things." I mean, public safety, just looking at that, had interaction with various aspects of all the nonprofits through the pandemic and all of that stuff, and you never know what's going to come up at a meeting like that. So I'm usually more in favor of, you know, responsibility, follow-through, you know, "We are inviting you to be part of this discussion, you have a seat at the table, we expect you to engage," as opposed to, you know, "Show up if you want." I mean, that's the way I'm looking at this. So, I'm in supportive of, of where we are in, in the motion. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Morone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I guess my only concern is I don't want to have too many people that already work for the, the town government, you know, involved in the committee, because I think that, that their solutions or the problems they're going to find are going to be the things that are most closely related to what it is that they do. So I'm more interested in getting more members of the community on here that have sort of, that are sort of doing these kinds of things, or have a better sense of, you know, what the need is out there. So i- if the goal, I think if the council's overarching goal is to get this money in the hands of people with the most need, I think then you have to, you know, there's a, I'll freely admit, there's a lot of things I don't know about what, you know, I know the businesses that I frequent, which are mostly like bars and restaurants on the east side, but I mean, other than that, I'm not sure, you know, in terms of. side, but I mean, other than that, I'm not sure, you know, in terms of manufacturing or, or, you know, whatever else we have in town, what their needs are. So I would just like to see those folks represented, as opposed to necessarily, you know, town departments.
I, I agree. I think we all agree that more in the room are better. More input is better. I mean, I think, I feel, the reason why I've come up with this variety and am interested in more participants and how we cut up the money is because I, I feel like I'm not personally in touch enough. I mean, I do have landlord clients, I do have small business clients who do have needs, I have friends who do have needs, but that, to me, is limited knowledge. So more is better. So, you know, I think at this point, we talk about what we do going forward. We, we've learned that we can't appoint a committee in this term, because it'll have to be reappointed at the beginning of the next term. You know, the next, the next item on the agenda is engagement of the consultant. And perhaps we wrap this up by engaging the consultant and setting up a meeting with the consultant to guide the discussion, to get us to the next step. Thoughts? Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with that last thought. I also would suggest perhaps someone from the Board of Ed. As well as, I'm trying to craft in my head how, what criteria, but, you know, it might be helpful to have a couple parents. And I don't, I don't know, you know, we can talk about, you know, with, you know, school-aged children, non-school-aged children, something, you know, but I, I think, you know, I've found through various committees that I've sat on, been involved with, having somebody who's not a professional, so to speak, and, you know, boots on the ground is very refreshing. So, I would suggest that. I know we'll be discussing this in the next couple of months. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. With that, then I don't see any other hands, I'd like to entertain a motion on item number four. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question, this might be for Mr. Senna. I saw the hourly rate. Do we, is there any sort of a cap on this, or is there an approximate cost? I noticed in the RFP, they said that Bristol spent, you know, X amount of dollars. Do we have any idea, or is there a capital?
You know, they're basically going to do as we direct them. So, you know, they're not going to do an assignment just because they're there and they are capable of doing it. So we would actually be controlling what work assignments they have. And, you know, from what our discussions were, they seem to be, it seems to be going to be a very reasonable price for the services that we're receiving. They're, you know, a nationally-known firm, and interviewed them, we had a great interview with this firm, and the controller checked and talked to other municipalities about, about their services. So we have complete control in terms of how much work they do, so we can, you know, see that. We may see, you know, they told us the broad breadth of things that they could be involved in, and we don't have to do that. You know, we could decide at some point in time, you know, you don't have to touch this at all, but certainly in terms of setting up all the federal reporting requirements and how to structure some of the things that you may develop, you know, even with providing agreement, not, they're not going to do the agreements, but giving input on how to craft the financial aspects of, you know, ensuring that the person's entitled to the relief and whatnot, they have that experience too. So, you know, we've, we've asked for $25,000 to get us going, and, you know, it may very well take us through, through half the year. They seem to think that was a possibility. I'm not sure. That seemed pretty light to me, but, you know, I think that once we get the appropriation, they can come and talk to you directly, and then, you know, you can get a feel for that, and we can certainly control what they do.
Okay. But there's no minimum or maximum stated?
No. We don't have to pay them a certain amount or anything.
Okay. And then my other question, do they assume any liability if, if it was found later on that Wallingford did something we weren't supposed to do, or there were an audit?
Well, they're, in terms of, well, they, for any accounting services, I mean, if they committed an error, that may be something, but they're not going to make a decision as to what we do. They're not going to say, you know, you must, you can't do that, or you can do that. We're going to have to make the ultimate decision, but they're there to give us some guidance from their experience in the federal world of, of finance and whatnot. But, you know, when you, when we decide on a particular program we want to do, the ultimate decision's going to be ours, not theirs.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Yeah, everyone's clear that we're paying them on an hourly basis, so I think it's a range of, so that, that's when Janice is indicating we can control it. It's, depends upon the number of hours. $10,000 could last three years, and it could last two weeks. Just depends upon how many hours we need their assistance.
So I would presume, just the way this came before us, to allocate $25,000 from the ARPA funds, if they're, if it's time to pay them more, it's going to come back before us and we'll review it.
Absolutely.
That's correct.
Yes.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Janice, I just, I was a little puzzled by something you just said. I thought it was part of this consultant's role to tell us that we can't do something.
They can provide us great expertise in, in making that determination under the federal rules and whatnot, but, I mean, ultimately, it's, we're the client, it's ultimately our decision as to whether or not, you know, there will be a legal aspect to making that determination, so it's not going to be entirely, I mean, they're not a veto over anything, any decision that we make. So they're there to provide us with their expertise, and, you know, sometimes people don't agree with expertise, so, but no, I expect them to play a significant role in giving us the proper advice as to whether or not, you know, if we, if we choose a particular program that we have to make a justification for, whether it fits the criteria under the, the rules, then we would certainly look to their expertise to assist us in doing that.
Yeah, I understand they don't have any vote on whether or not it's done, but it's their job to guide us as to what we can and can't do based upon their interpretation of the federal document.
Correct.
Okay.
They're not lawyers, so that would be another element of it, too.
Okay. Thank you.
A lot of it is accounting.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the public? Mr. Senna, I think you need a microphone.
I just want to make a comment. We keep saying that we might be audited. We will be audited. This money, we get audited every year. We get a federal single audit. Any money, we get over $750,000 in federal money, there is no doubt that this money is going to be audited. Just wanted to clear that out.
Please tell the author of the CCM guidance. Thank you. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Morgans.
Yes.
Shortell.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Sandri.
Yes.
And Chairman Servoni.
Yes. All yes, the motion passes. There being no further business on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Tada, seconded by Marone. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed can stay. Good night.